Good morning. Welcome to the Budget and Appropriations Committee. I'm Danielle McCray. I'm Chair of the Committee. I'm also the City Councilwoman for the 2nd District. And at this time, just want to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. Joining us today, we have members of the Committee, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, representing the 6th District.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
As well as Councilman Paris Gray, representing the 8th District.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
And we are also joined by Councilwoman Odette Ramos, representing the 14th District. In addition, we also have several representatives from the Mayor's Office, as well as the Council President's Office. And we are staffed by Peruma Nandi today. So, we're here today because the Committee is going to be hearing Legislative Oversight. LO25-001 is our quarterly budget briefings. It's for the purpose of calling on Representatives from the Finance Department, Bureau of Budget and Management Research, BBMR, the Department of Planning, and Baltimore City Public Schools to provide a briefing to the City Council on the financial performance and level of spending against the approved budgets. We're going to go right into a presentation from BBMR at this time.
Good morning, Chairwoman McCray, members of the Committee. My name is Laura Larson. I'm the city's Budget Director. Thank you for having me here today. I am here to present the preliminary and unaudited results for the city's general fund for the fiscal year that ended on June 30th, fiscal 2025. So, when we look at the fiscal '25 actuals, overall, within the general fund, the city ended with a $3.3 million deficit. Revenue came in about $66.6 million ahead of our budget assumptions, or a variance of approximately 2.8%. And expenditures came in over budget by approximately $69.9 million, or a 2.7% variance. On the revenue side, we were helped out by stronger-than-anticipated income tax returns. And on the expenditure side, the final year-end numbers ended about $21.3 million higher than our third-quarter projections due to a timing issue with one of the schools' payments in FY '25. If we exclude the issue regarding the timing of the payment for city schools, the city's general fund actually ended the year with a $13.3 million surplus. So I think for the purposes of this discussion and how we go forward thinking about how the city ended budget-to-actual, we should take that school's payment and handle that off to the side. Funding for that school's payment will be covered as part of the fund balance that was available from the FY '24 surplus due to the payment not being made in the prior fiscal year and being made in the current year. So what I'd like to do is start by talking about what we saw on the revenue side in terms of major variations. So, as I mentioned, we ended with a $66.6 million surplus in revenue, or variance of about 2.8%. Like I said, a major contributor to this variance is related to income tax receipts, and I'll talk about that again on our subsequent slides. The other items that are helping us out in terms of '25 is related to the city's properties. Preliminary results show that the final collection rate for the city's real property tax rate had improved from a projected $97.5 million to $98.5 million, which helped to contribute to stronger-than-budgeted revenue. One item that we're closely monitoring is the impact of some prior-year refunding associated with personal property tax and energy tax collections. On the next slide, you can see a summary of what these surpluses and deficits look like by the various categories of revenue, which is consistent with how we present all of these revenue items in the city's budget materials. So first up is in terms of income tax. So we had a budget of $46.466.5 million, and the preliminary actual is $508.9 million, for a variance of approximately $42 million, or 9%. This projection, or the final year-end amount, is $27.3 million higher than what we had projected at the third quarter. Now, there's two factors that go into the final income tax revenue. And I think it's important to remember that income tax revenue is collected at the state level and then dispersed back to local jurisdictions based off of an allocation formula. And so the state is the owner of the data, and we have to rely on the level of data that we are receiving back from the state in order to build our projections. So, within that allocation, the city receives something that's called unallocated withholdings. And what happens is, in the fourth quarter of every single fiscal year, the state will look at the pot of income tax returns that had not been claimed by residents through their tax returns. And what they'll do is, using a distribution formula, is they'll send local jurisdictions their share of those unallocated withholdings. This is a one-time payment that we get in the fourth quarter, so we have no trend data to try to predict what that number is going to be in terms of, is it going to be higher or lower than what we had seen in the prior year? What we saw in FY '25 was that what we received from the unallocated withholding was $27.4 million. So that's higher than the $10.6 million that we had assumed in the budget, and it's higher than the five-year average that we typically saw from those withholdings, which was about $16 million. So it was sort of very out of the norm and very unexpected. The other factor when it comes to income tax is that we work closely with the State Department of Revenue to be in line with how the state is forecasting growth for income tax year-over-year. And so, when we started the FY '25 budget process, the state was projecting 4.6% annual increase over the full FY '25 period. In December of 2024, they had upgraded their projections, and they said, "You should project a 6% growth in terms of income tax." Then, in March, based off of what was happening at the federal level and anticipated contracting in the labor market, they downgraded their projection to 4.9%. But when we look at the actual returns over the entirety of FY '25, we actually saw growth of 9%. So, our projection throughout the year was sort of moving as we were receiving updated information from the state. But ultimately, what ended up happening at the end of the fiscal year was that the actuals beat the projection that we had been seeing throughout the entire period. Understanding that this is frustrating and a high level of volatility, we took a look at what this variance looks like across the other large jurisdictions in Maryland. And when we looked back between FY '23 and FY '25, we saw that across these jurisdictions, the average variance in terms of budget assumptions versus actual revenue was 6.5%. And in Baltimore City, our average variance was 6.1%. So we were beating the trend there slightly. And if you look here on the slide, you can see that it's sort of varying degrees of variance that we see in the different counties. So, for example, Baltimore County has seen the highest variance over that three-year period of 10.3%. Some of the counties with less variation is Hartford County and Prince George's County. They're slightly under 4%. So, what we will continue to do in BBMR is lean into the partnership with the state and the Department of Revenue in terms of how they're building these forecasts, also leaning into our partnership with Mako through a collaboration with the finance and budget teams from these other jurisdictions to improve the data that we're getting from the state to really try to ensure that we have the best, accurate information to build these forecasts. What I will just remind everybody of is that if we think about future risk in terms of general fund revenue, this is one that we have to keep monitoring. So just because we didn't see the drop-off in FY '25, we do know that income tax returns are a lagging indicator of what's happening in the job market in our state. And so, especially when we think about the impact of the smaller federal workforce and layoffs happening at the federal level, we did not see that in FY '25 because of the timing of those actions. And so I do believe that we have to continue to take a cautious and measured approach because we know that the full impact of those actions in Washington may not fully be realized in our income tax revenue for one to two years. Next up, I'd like to talk about property tax. So, property tax is our largest revenue stream to the city's general fund. It represents almost 50% of our revenue. In FY '25, we had a budget of $1.14 billion, and the preliminary actual is $1.15 billion. So, we came in about $7.5 million ahead of the budget assumption, or about a 0.7% variance. The final year-end position is about $2.4 million higher than what we had projected at the third quarter. As I mentioned, we saw that collections had improved for the real property tax from a projection of $97.5 to $98.5. On the real property side, we saw a year-end surplus of $11.7 million. Our property tax revenue also includes the personal property tax component, which is paid primarily by the utilities and various businesses. In the case of both utilities and business corporations, there are a number of unpaid balances due to reassessments and appeals that were ongoing in the fourth quarter that will ultimately be, that are projected to be repaid in FY '26. Next up is transfer and recordation taxes. So this is tied closely to property tax. In FY '25, we had a budget of $92.1 million, and the preliminary actual was just under $105 million. So we came in with a $12.7 million surplus, or about 13.7% variance. We saw that this revenue had improved by $3 million compared to our third-quarter projections. A couple of things happening here was, in the fourth quarter, the city had experienced a higher-than-prior-year trend real estate activity. And so we saw a significant uptick in the number of transactions that were paying transfer and recordation taxes. The other factor that's helping us out here is the overall value of those residential properties. So if we look at the average value of a residential home that was sold during fiscal 2024, that was $252,000. And if we look at that same value during FY '25, it had increased to $265,000. This is a continuation of a trend that we have seen since the real estate market took off during the pandemic. And it's a good sign that the value of our residential properties continue to hold. Next up is tax credits. So tax credits are reflected as a cost to the city because we are giving up some form of revenue. So, we had a total budget of $100.9 million. The preliminary actual was $99 million, or a variance of 1.9 million, or just around 1%. When we look at what's happening here, there were essentially three components that were driving the small surplus that we saw here. First is related to the High Performance Tax Credit and the CHAP Tax Credit. Activity for both of those credits was lower than what we had assumed in the budget, contributing to a $2.9 million surplus. We also saw that there was declined participation in the Targeted Homeowners Tax Credit. That's the tax credit that provides property tax relief to owner-occupied properties in the city. That's part of the 20-Cents by 2020 Initiative. That credit ended the year with a $2.3 million surplus. And then finally, we saw an uptick in activity associated with the Enterprise Zone Tax Credit. There were a number of fairly large projects that got through the pipeline in the fourth quarter. And so we saw that the cost of that program had increased by $750,000 compared to the third-quarter projection. Next up is highway user revenue. So this is the allocation that we receive back from the state as part of, to help support the city's transportation program, both operating and capital costs. We had a total budget of $234.7 million. The preliminary actual was $236.8 million. So there was variance of about $2.1 million, or about 1%. The final year-end amount here is $2.5 million higher than what we had projected in the third quarter. When we look at the trend for HUR going back to FY '22 through FY '26, you can see the impact year-over-year in the stepped-up allocation that was part of the five-year increase under current state law. FY '26 is the fourth of five years where we will be receiving that higher allocation. I want to note that when we look at the increase in revenue in each of those years, it's reflected of the fact that the city's getting a larger pie of the overall HUR. It's not reflective of the fact that HUR revenue is growing at the state level. In fact, when we look at the different components of the HUR formula, we can see that there is growth in terms of titling tax and that the city is receiving higher revenue as part of the corporate income tax under the allocation formula. However, we, like our state partners, are concerned about the drop-off in fuel tax. In FY '25, it was down by 2.6%, which is a continuation of a trend that we have seen going back to 2016. And the overall number of vehicle registrations statewide are down by 9%, which is a dramatic drop-off from the prior year. So, now I'm going to switch gears and talk about revenue streams that came in under budget compared to what we had projected in FY '25. So first up is investment earnings. We had a total, a budget assumption of $41.6 million. The preliminary actual is just over $32 million. So we had a variance of about $9.3 million, or 22%. The final preliminary number for investment earnings came in about $2.1 million lower than what we had forecasted at the third quarter. Really what's driving here is a couple of factors. The interest rate that the city had experienced on its short-term borrowing, we had assumed 4.1%. The actual average return that we had received in FY '25 was closer to 3.8%. The other factor here is that, under the ARPA program, we've been able to invest the cash that the city had received as part of our $641 million award. And as anticipated, that cash balance is dropping as we get closer and closer to the deadline. And so we obviously are seeing less in terms of interest returns on that principal. Next up is energy taxes. We had a budget assumption of $51.2 million. The preliminary actual was $44.9 million, or variance of about $6.2 million, or 12.2%. The real factor that is driving the loss of revenue in FY '25 is related to a refunding that happened from out-of-energy taxes back to manufacturing companies. The city was notified in the fourth quarter that a number of manufacturing companies had been charged energy taxes on the natural gas component of their bill, which they are exempt from. So, we had to issue refunds for that portion of taxes that they had paid from the prior fiscal years. This is an item that we will be continuing to partner with BG&E on to ensure that properties are properly classified and the energy taxes are being properly captured by ratepayers to avoid this level of refunding moving forward. Next up is our net parking revenue. So we had a budget assumption of $23 million and ended the year at $21.1 million, or a variance of about $2 million, or 8.7%. The final revenue here is about $1.7 million higher than what we had forecasted at the third quarter. What we saw here overall was that parking fine revenues ended the year about $5.7 million lower than budget. I do want to note that in the FY '25 budget, we had made a number of assumptions where we had assumed that parking tax would grow in FY '25. That included reinstating late fees for parking citations, implementing the license plate reader pilot, and then some modifications to the parking tax legislation that was passed. And so, what we saw here is that year-over-year actual revenue related to parking grew in FY '25. We just didn't fully realize the additional revenue that was assumed in the budget. Do you want me to pause? Okay. And finally, traffic cameras, where we had a total budget of $26.8 million. The preliminary actual is $21.8 million, so variance of approximately $5 million, or 18.6%. What we saw within traffic cameras is that our collection rates had decreased in the fourth quarter. So if we look at speed cameras, the collection rate is hovering about 52%. And red light cameras is hovering about 51%. A big reason why we missed the target, the budget target in FY '25 is related to additional cameras that were scheduled to be deployed in FY '25. We had assumed that they would be deployed at the start of the fiscal year. There were delays in getting those up and off the ground, and so we were not able to realize a full year of revenue. Those cameras are up and operational, and so we do believe that that will rebound as we go into FY '26. So next up, I'd like to turn our focus to what was happening on the expenditure side of the House. So, as I mentioned, we ended the year with a $69.9 million deficit. I spoke at the top of the presentation about the interaction with the city's schools regarding the prior-year payment that hit in FY '25. The other factor here is that the city made a $12 million contribution to the City Springs redevelopment project for the new elementary and middle school. That is part of the PSO project, and that contribution was not included in the original budget for FY '25. The other factor that is contributing to the higher deficit in FY '25 is related to our fire and police contracts. Contracts for both of those unions were finalized last fall after the budget had been adopted. And the final amounts for both of those contracts exceeded what was assumed in the budget by about $20 million. In terms of vacancies, we did see continued improvement in the number of general fund vacancies in FY '25. Overall, vacancies trended down by about 16% during the fiscal year. Sworn vacancies were down by 14%, and unworn vacancies had declined by 17%. This slide here shows what those vacancy trends look like by month. So, we ended FY '25 with just over 1,500 general fund vacancies, or an overall general fund vacancy rate of 15%. When we look at vacancies overall, we can see that they're concentrated in a handful of classifications. Police officers are clearly the outlier. We had 462 vacant officer positions at the close of the fiscal year. But some of the other top classifications include office support specialists, paramedics, the deputy sheriffs, EMTs, community health nurses, and CDL drivers. We also spent a lot of time talking with this committee in the spring about overtime trends. And so when we look at overtime over the course of FY '25, we spent $140.6 million. That equated to about $11.7 million of average overtime spending. When we look at those overtime numbers by agency, we can see that overtime from six agencies accounts for 95% of our overtime spending overall, with police and fire representing the lion's share of that spending. We look at these trends, we can see that overtime spiked in January across all the agencies, and that was driven by the timing of the winter weather that we experienced in the city last year. So now what I'd like to do is to talk about how each of our city agencies ended the year. Starting off by the agencies that had surpluses due to vacant positions. So we had 10 agencies where the majority of their surplus is driven by vacant positions. Collectively, the vacancies from these positions represent about 21% of our general fund vacancies, or about a fifth of the vacancies overall. You can see the list here. It includes the comptroller's office, general services, the library, health, housing and community development, human resources, the Mayor's Office of Information and Technology, the Office of Children and Family Success, Office of Equity and Civil Rights, and the State's Attorney's Office. Two items that I do want to note is that in the case of general services and the Human Resources Department, they did also have significant savings from other items within their budget. So in the case of DGS, they had some equipment savings, as well as some contractual costs associated with capital projects. And then in the case of HR, there were some savings on various contractual services. The surpluses that you're seeing overall on the screen represent the total surpluses for these agencies, not just the portion of the surplus that was related to vacant positions. So next up, what I'd like to do is to talk about each of these positions, each of these agencies that had variance but were not driven by vacant positions. So first up are surplus agencies. So these are agencies that ended the year with variance of over 10%. So the City Council had a year-end variance of about $2.9 million, or 18%. That is caused primarily by funding that was set aside for various grants to community-based organizations in FY '25. Legislative reference had a surplus of about $296,000, and that is related to delays in a new lease for the space that houses the city's archives. And then finally, the Environmental Control Board had a surplus of $287,000, and that is coming from the Be More Beautiful Grant Program, as well as various staff costs, including the contractual costs for their judges. Next up, we'll talk about agencies that ended the year at budget. I'm not going to highlight the agencies with very small variance. There's not a lot to say there in terms of spending aligning with budget assumptions. So, I will call out the Circuit Court ended the year with a $1.4 million surplus. That is coming from juror stipends. The Finance Department ended the year with a $906,000 surplus, mainly coming from savings within the Bureau of Revenue Collections. Next up would be the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, which ended the year with a $72,000 surplus. No major variance there. I will also call out the Office of the Inspector General, which had a surplus of $255,000. That's mostly related to the timing of the ethics software. That new system in the first year is being funded by the IT Department, but will be funded by the OIG's office moving forward. And then finally, the Department of Public Works ended the year with a $6 million surplus, or about 4.7% variation. Those savings are coming from the solid funding that was set aside for a solid waste contract in FY '26, as well as savings on fuel and staffing costs. And then finally, the agencies that ended the year at deficit. So starting off with the Fire Department, that had an overall deficit of $38.5 million, or 15% variance. The deficit here is coming from the fiscal '25 union contract overtime costs and then the use of contractual EMS services to support city ambulances. The Law Department had a small deficit of $81,000 driven by contractual services. The Liquor License Board had a deficit of $455,000 driven by office rental costs, the leasing of external cars, and overtime for staff costs. The Labor Commissioner's Office had a deficit of $1.7 million due to legal costs to support the city's ongoing negotiations with our unions. And the Art and Culture Grants went over budget by $480,000 driven by other personnel costs that are funded by the city for the Baltimore Museum of Art and the Walters Art Gallery. Next up is the Convention Complex, that had a deficit of $5.1 million, or variance of 33%. When we think about the Convention Complex, that includes both the Convention Center and the CFG Arena. So in FY '25, we needed to make a payment to CFG Arena based off of our operator agreement where we have revenue sharing for their portion of admissions and amusement tax that is generated by events at the arena. What happened was FY '25 was our first full fiscal year under the terms of the agreement, and we did not have the revenue-sharing payment budgeted as an expenditure. So we have revenue to offset this. We just didn't have the expenditure authority included in the '25 budget. That was corrected for the '26 budget. The Mayor's Office of Cable and Communication had a $227,000 deficit driven by staffing costs. We discussed the deficit for city schools. MoED had a deficit of $167,000 driven by the Summer of 2024 Youth Works Program. And then finally, the Police Department had a deficit of $47.5 million driven by the costs associated with the FOP contract and overtime. Wreckin' Parks had a $5.6 million deficit driven by overtime, urban forestry, contractual services, and then various... services, and then various costs associated with park maintenance. The sheriff's office had a $3.4 million deficit driven by fleet costs and overtime expenditures. And the transportation department ended with a $4.5 million deficit from snow removal costs associated with last winter's weather. What I do want to note is that while we did still have a number of agencies that ended the year in deficit, we had placed controls, spending controls for city agencies coming out of the third quarter. And what we saw was that many agencies improved their outlook between our third quarter projections and where we ended the fiscal year. A couple of the agencies that I want to highlight, the finance department was projected to have a $1 million plus deficit. They were able to end the year at surplus. The mayor's office of information and technology was also projected to have a $1 million plus deficit and ended the year in surplus. And even for these agencies that we've identified here as having deficits, we did see that spending in many cases slowed in the third quarter. And so we're continuing to work with these agencies that are trending over to ensure that we are bringing down these deficits and that agencies are staying in line with their budgeted amounts as we move through the fiscal year. So I'd just like to quickly wrap up by previewing some of the year-end actions that will be coming before the body as we go into the months of October and November. And I see that there was a slide hidden, so I'll just address these quickly. Per the charter, BBMR will be initiating supplemental appropriations for all of the agencies that ended the year in deficit. So that will be approximately $129 million worth of supplementals. We will be, the source of funding for those supplementals will be coming from surplus revenue that we realized in FY '25, as well as surpluses from the agencies that ended the year with with an overall surplus. And then the prior year payment for city schools will be paid out of the city's fund balance based off of the surplus that had lapsed to fund balance in FY '24. So with that, I can take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Larson. Can you, can you talk about the spending controls that were put on fire and the police department?
Yes.
And also, did their spending decrease during that third quarter that you're referring to?
Yeah, so some of the spending controls that were played, that were put in place were an additional review of discretionary overtime. Purchasing cards were pulled back except for from the agency directors. All contractual spending went through an additional review during that, during that final period. And so what I believe we saw in terms of spending for both of those agencies was that the year-end amounts wound up being very close to what we were projecting at the third And again, I think a big reason for that is what we were seeing that was driving the deficit in FY '25 was driven by those union contracts where, you know, obviously there weren't a lot of levers to slow spending, as well as, you know, by the time some of those controls were put in place regarding overtime spending and things like that, we had already had nine months of expenditures. So I'm just looking at our third quarter slides. In the case of the fire department, at third quarter, we were projecting a $40 million deficit. So their their final deficit ended up coming in about $1.5 million lower than what we had previously forecasted. And in the case of the police department, we had anticipated a $41.7 million deficit at third quarter. So their deficit went up by about $3 million or, I'm sorry, it went up from 41 to 47.5.
What plan does fire have regarding reducing their vacancies for paramedics and EMTs, which are driving a lot of their overtime?
Yeah, you're exactly right. Because what we saw in FY '25 is we actually got to a point where our firefighters were over hired and that we had, you know, a bench of firefighters who were going through the academy in order to be slotted into vacancies upon graduation, which I think is a good sign because part of the problem that we had with fire overtime going back to the pandemic was that we had gotten behind on some of that recruitment. So to your point, Chairwoman, the suppression side is largely stabilized from a staffing level. When we look at the EMT side or the EMS side of the House, in FY '26, we included funding in the budget to support the contractual ambulance units. Previously, fire was utilizing those ambulance units, and that was an unbudgeted expense. So I think that right off the gate should bring down their deficit by four to five million dollars going into FY '26. The other item that the fire department has been working on is if you look at the splits of their call volumes in terms of advanced life support calls versus basic life support calls, we know that the lion's share of calls are for basic life support. And that's where the contractual medic units are really helping out is for those types of calls. And so what fire has found is that it's easier, they have an easier time filling EMT positions than they do the paramedic positions. So what they are doing is they are downgrading some of their advanced life support units to basic life support units so that they will be able to recruit additional EMTs to staff those units. Downgrading those units will also allow them to transfer additional funds to the overall contract as well to support additional medic units. So I believe that change should produce overtime relief as we go into FY '26 as well because they're going to have additional support from those contractual units and then should be able to fill more of their EMT slots through a concerted recruitment effort.
The police commissioner was very confident about reducing vacancies at our budget hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Where have they been tracking with reducing their vacancies?
So we did see improvements in their overall staffing level when we look over the full FY '25 period. You know, they are part of what was resulting in that 14% decline in the number of sworn positions. When we look specifically at police vacancies from this, Ben, can you tell me what was our vacancy number for police in July of FY '25 compared to June of FY '25? And what was it in July? 508? So we went from 538 vacant officer positions in July of fiscal '25 to 462 in June of fiscal '25.
Director Larson, I know that we spoke about this, but I just wanted to ask this question on the record. Regarding BGE and these energy taxes, who was responsible for these properties not being classified?
So I'm going to start an answer, and then I'm going to look over to our assistant budget director, Pedro Ponte, who can help to fill in any gaps. Pedro, I do want to flag, you'll need a mic in order to respond. So the rate that properties pay as part of their energy taxes is driven by how the property is classified by BG&E. So in this particular case, there was a classification issue regarding this group of properties that resulted in them being assessed the energy tax component of the overall energy tax bill. That is something that was brought to the city's attention by legal representation for these companies. And again, we're coordinating currently with BG&E and through the city's finance department to understand where the breakdown happened, how do we verify these properties moving forward to assure, ensure that these properties are being assessed the appropriate tax rate to avoid this level of refund. Pedro, do you want to give any additional insight into, you know, what caused this particular issue?
I think you covered pretty well. That's the process. They, those companies need to be certified by the state.
And I'm sorry, Pedro.
I'm sorry.
We know you, but can you just?
Yeah, yeah. You're right. Sorry, Pedro Ponte, Assistant Budget Director. This company needs to be certified by the state by the type of activity. BG&E applies their rate to their bills and then start paying accordingly. What happened is that three years ago, and I assume these individuals reached out to our legal team saying, we are being charged for something we shouldn't. They came and filed a complaint with the city. The city actually opened an investigation and went to the facilities and assessed the type of businesses they were running and identified that was correct. They shouldn't have been charged the rate they were charged. And then they filed that complaint to us, and we have to issue that refund. If I may add one more comment, this is very unusual. Normally, in prior years, we see some situations like this that run like $300, $400,000 a year. This is a very, a very unusual situation, never happened in the past. So, and this run for almost three years, the run is rate.
Thank you for clarifying that. I guess what I've... Have we determined if that responsibility was on our side where there was a lapse where the information was incorrect or was it on BG&E's side?
I cannot make a comment on that. I can reach out to the department who did the investigation and get back to you with an answer.
Great, thank you. Committee members, I'm going to start with Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess first I just want to say it was nice hearing you say that you're, you have a partnership with Mako and with the forecast, and you're also partnering with the state, which are both very important pieces as you're continuing to move forward. So I guess I want to have a little discussion about the ARPA funding. And I think we all know that once that funding is gone, it's gone. So are there any plans? And so an office was created. What's going to happen to those employees? Are they going to filter in somewhere else in the city? How are, is the final communication going to happen with a number of nonprofits that got startup money? And just how is that finalization going to occur?
Yeah. I can speak at a high level about how we're thinking about ARPA in relation to the '26 and '27 budget. I might, I think I would defer the conversation regarding the nonprofits and that communication to our mayor's office of recovery programs because they're leading that effort. But, but to your point, Madam Vice President, you know, we knew going into this process with ARPA that we were going to be able to test out new things, evaluate their impact, and then make decisions about, you know, what, if anything, we would be able to continue post the award deadline. And so there was a lot of strategy in terms of making sure that we were very calculated and careful when ARPA dollars were being allocated to any sort of recurring program costs, whether that be, you know, here in the city within various services or for nonprofit organizations. So we are in the early stages of starting to plan for the FY '27 budget. And so we'll, FY '27 will be the year that we experience, you know, the official end of ARPA. And so working through the city administrator and the mayor's office to think about how those decisions get made about, you know, what are we going to be able to sustain moving forward and looking at that in the context of overall budget priorities. I think, and just one more note on that, I think the city administrator has always been very clear with ARPA that, you know, there should be no expectation that the city will have resources to be able to continue those programs. Separately, when you, you talk about the staff positions, if you, if you think specifically within the mayor's office of recovery programs, but then elsewhere where you have those positions in other various city agencies, I think we have an opportunity that we have these individuals who have developed a strong set of skills that can make real contributions to our city services, that we have an opportunity to look for other ways that we can retain that talent here in our organization. So that work is also being, is taking place through a partnership between the city administrator's office and HR to look for appropriate vacancies or opportunities where, you know, those employees might be a fit. The other thing that we have in the mayor's office of recovery programs is that they've also stepped in to take a leadership role with the opioid restitution funds. And so that office will continue to exist in some form post the ARPA deadline as they continue to support the ORF dollars in trying to, you know, oversee those programs and ensure that those dollars are getting out on the ground. Yes, yes. Yeah.
Sorry. When I heard that it was, you know, you're able to repay, I'm like, okay, let's just explain that a little more.
Are you talking about the schools item or was it a revenue item?
Revenue.
I think you are referencing what I had discussed with property tax, the personal property tax. So for both the public utility portion and the business corporation portion of the personal property tax, it's not as clean as our real property taxes are in terms of their reassessments and their appeals. And so what happens is those reassessments and appeals are happening all the time. And so if there is an active appeal ongoing or reassessment that's still in dispute, the balance of those taxes won't end up getting paid until the next fiscal year when that is resolved.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For those agencies that were projected to have a deficit but ended in a surplus after you made the changes in Q3, do you know if any of their core services were adversely affected by that?
No. I mean, I think the ones where we saw big changes were, as I mentioned, the finance department, the IT department, and then I would also put the mayor's office of homeless services in that category. So in the case of IT and homeless services, we worked with those agencies throughout the fourth quarter to identify expenditures that had been charged to the general fund at earlier points in the fiscal year that could be covered, that could or were assumed to be funded by a grant or a capital project. And so we And so we were able to get things charged to where they need to be and are continuing to work with those agencies to ensure that moving forward, things are charged correctly in the right spot the first time so that we avoid having this cleanup exercise. In the case of the finance department, they were able to look at some of their expenditures, especially for various contracts that they had to support different teams in the department. And they were able to look at ways that they could start to cut back on those contracts that ended up resulting in a slowdown of spending in the fourth quarter.
Do you guys have a plan to do this for every agency? I would hate for this to be a reactive measure instead of a preventive measure. I feel like that would be able to save the city, over the years, a lot of headache and heartache and tough questioning from the budget when it's budget season. Do you guys have any plans on doing that? I mean, I know you can't do everyone every year, but just looking at different ones, just go through and do some type of fiscal audit.
Yeah. So I think, you know, to the first category of issues, like where things are charged incorrectly and getting them to the right place, we've made a lot of progress on that. I think if we looked at this slide deck from FY '24, you could, there was a much larger inventory of agencies where that was an issue and we were able to get that cleaned up. A big piece of that is working with those agencies to make sure that their payroll is getting charged correctly, starting at the beginning of the fiscal year, and working with them to make sure that they're getting their grants set up properly. But there is a, you know, I lean in heavily to the finance director and my counterparts who are at the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services and the Grants Management Office to, you know, leaning in heavily to them to really encourage this philosophy of charge things once and charge it correctly the first time. And so, you know, we'll continue to reinforce that as we go into the next fiscal year. One of the ways we're trying to support that in the budget office is by looking at how we could implement payroll allocations as part of how we build the budget, because then we could immediately cut those over to the live version after the budget gets adopted in June and you avoid this, you know, cleanup exercise or this body of work that exists when we transition fiscal years to make sure that all of those allocations are getting set up.
Thank you. For the targeted homeowner tax credit, it's given automatically. So you said that there was a, there was a decrease in participation. Could you explain the decrease? And does that mean that we had less homeowners? Or could you just go explain that a little more?
Yeah, I'm going to start and then I'm going to turn it over to Pedro to talk a little bit more about the mechanics. So in order to get the targeted homeowner's tax credit, you have to certify that you live in the property and that it's owner occupied. And so that is done through the homestead tax credit. And so if you have certified through that credit, then the THTC follows behind. And so what we saw in FY '25, we were able to make projections about the number of owner occupied units that we have in the city and what that would cost in terms of the tax credit. And what we saw was that there were savings in the overall credit. So that would lead us to believe that there are owner occupied units where individuals are not claiming the credit.
Okay. And I have some more questions, but I'll defer.
Would you add to that? Okay.
I don't need to add anything if you score.
You have the floor.
Appreciate you, Madam Chair. Could you explain why we have, and I say we because I actually mean this, for the city council, why we have almost a $3 million surplus for our, for the budget?
Yeah, a part of that is timing related. So in FY '25, there were dollars set aside for various nonprofit grants to community-based organizations that different members couldn't get out the door. And in some cases in various districts, there were delays in terms of getting those dollars out the door. There will be a carryforward appropriation where we would be bringing a portion of that appropriation forward into FY '26 to allow for those payments to get out the door where it was a true timing issue. The other item, and so that's the lion's share of the surplus there. The other portion of the surplus overall is just, there was a transition in the council office, both in terms of the council president and then in a number of district offices. And just in terms of the ebb and flow of that transition, there were a variety of savings, whether that be from, you know, positions turning over or just, you know, other various line items that didn't get fully spent. I want to, I want to count that as sort of a recurring surplus at that level. I would say that it was really just due to the nature of the transition in FY '25.
Okay. And can you talk about how each agency tracks their respective budgets? Is there a centralized system, like a software that is uniform across agencies? And does each agency, or does each agency have their own system?
Everything is tracked, worked. You know, all of the expenditures that agencies are, you know, initiating every day, from paying people to pay, like paying employees to paying invoices, all those transactions are recorded in Workday and they're charged against the appropriate fund, agency, service and activity based off of, you know, how the budget was built. Agencies have access to a suite of budget reports that exist in Workday and they're consistent across all of the different agencies where they can track their budget to actual spend and they can kind of drill into that data, you know, based off of different use cases. Separately, my office has deployed a number of dashboards that help agencies monitor their overall spend, monitor their staffing levels and sort of what savings they're realizing from vacant positions so that they can identify where they are trending too fast in terms of spending or where it looks like they have surplus throughout the fiscal year. Our office does a, you know, a holistic projection every quarter, and those are the projections we bring back to this body. Separately, our, my analysts check in with their agency counterparts on a monthly basis just to check in on key stats related to their spending and then try to understand like any major hiring that could impact their overall budget performance or any sort of major procurement items that could impact their budget performance.
Okay. So as far as like getting the, when the actials are reported to the council, why is there such a lag in getting those true numbers? Is it because of Workday or like what is the reason behind the delay or in certain cases, getting the money out before the fiscal year ends?
That could be in terms of spending down their budgets. Is that your question, Councilman?
Yeah.
That could be for a myriad of reasons. It could be like, let's say, so for example, in the FY '26 budget, we allocated $2 million for a new grant program as part of the opioid restitution fund. So, you know, those funds have been appropriated since July 1st. But between now, between, you know, the dollars getting appropriated and the dollars being able to get out on the street, they have to define the parameters of the program, they have to do an RFP for folks to apply to the program, review them, and then once the grantees are selected, they would have to go back to the Board of Estimates and authorize the individual grants with those groups and get the actual grant agreements authorized. All of that, just, you know, what I just laid out there, that probably happens in an optimal scenario in like a six to nine month window, but more likely than that there are delays, especially if you're working with contracts and there's somebody on the other side of the transaction that might not share our timelines. Or maybe it's their first time doing business with the city and so just kind of getting them up to speed with like the various requirements. Those are some of the items that could cause slowdowns. I think you have seen certain agencies sort of adapt to kind of trying to be quicker on some of these items. I would say at least from the procurement perspective, where we see the agencies that are the most successful are ones who are thinking forward. So, you know, if they see their budget in April, you know, they're starting to work in that spring period to get things in line if they need to do RFPs or anything so that they can start that work as soon as the budget gets adopted. The other thing on positions themselves, so anytime we're doing something with a position that's outside of the budget process, that has to be vetted internally through the agency, through the budget office and through HR. And then it gets reviewed by the Expenditure Control Committee, which meets once a month, and then those actions go to the Board of Estimates. But that whole cycle takes about eight to 10 weeks. And so like if you miss a cycle, you could be like two months delayed in terms of getting your position created or getting a position reclassed. And so sort of the only way we could go faster there is if we increased medium frequency like of the ECC or if we tried to focus on ways that we could cut down those review times.
Yeah. And I appreciate that response. I think, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I just know when it's budget season, we as a council feel like we're not, we don't have all the facts to really come in.
Yeah.
And really have, and ask those questions because the actials are never really there. Everything is based off the projections and we're working off of the FY from a year prior and so of the year before, we're talking. And so I just would love to continue to work on and push everyone on, ensuring that we can get more, like more actual factual numbers, maybe quarterly, just to ensure when it's time for us to go into the budget season as a council, as folks on the budget committee, as a councilwoman, Ray Ramos, who is the unofficial member, we have all the information that we have to ask the questions that we need to ask to really get a view of what the city's fiscal outlook is looking like.
Yeah. And, you know, we've, under the leadership of Chairwoman McCray, we've really tried to provide additional information in terms of, you know, providing our projections broken out by agency and service. We've also made some changes on my team internally to try to expedite our turnaround time of this material. But I continue to welcome direct feedback from the committee about what we could be providing that would help you all out going into, into the spring budget season.
Thank you. And thank you, Director Lawson. We're going to hear from our planning department at this time, Department of Planning.
My name is Sarah Parnilam. I'm the Division Chief for Policy and Data Analysis with the Planning Department and I'm pleased to provide a report for the capital budget for fiscal '25, quarter four. We provided the council with a detailed report that includes appropriations and expenditures through quarter four of fiscal year '25. It includes all projects that are still open, so it doesn't include projects that have already been closed, that are pending close or canceled, but all other projects that exist in our, in our financial system. So what you see on the screen here is a summary by agency, but you can see the same information for individual projects listed in that report. So the report includes the total appropriations to date, how much has been budgeted over multiple years. You can see the total amount. You can also see the total expenditures and the total obligations. And then to provide some more recent context for those totals, we have provided information about how much of those total appropriations were budgeted in fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25. So you can see what is recent of those appropriations. And then the same for the expenditures. We've provided the expenditures for FY '24 as well as FY '25 broken out from those total expenditures. And so what I'm going to do, in addition to the appropriations and expenditures, we were able to provide in the report information about the status of the individual projects. And so I'm going to just go through quickly, agency by agency, and talk about kind of a summary of the status of the projects for each agency and then happy to answer any questions. So if we start with general services, we can see that of the appropriations for general services, you can see, you know, how much has been spent for each of these statuses and how much is unspent. And it really is kind of what you would expect, right? So for projects that are still in the initiation stage, most of those funds are not yet spent because those projects are just starting. And then if you look at projects that have reached the construction stage, you can see that there's substantial expenditures. As we look at things that are substantially complete, you can see that almost all of those funds for projects that are in that status have been spent to date. You'll notice at the end here that there is, there are projects that are still in the reserve cost centers and typically we do not see any spending in reserve cost centers. When an agency is ready to work on that project, they will transfer funds from the reserve cost center into an active project. And so that's why you're seeing that last column is completely unspent. And so then this is going to look a little bit different if we look at an agency like housing and community development that doesn't have kind of traditional infrastructure projects. So they're not, you know, renovating a building such as City Hall, which is within DGS's portfolio. So you'll see a lot of things that are in the other category here where they have programs for demolition, programs for stabilization that are ongoing in nature. So this other includes a lot of our programs. It might include things that are paused. It might include things where we didn't get status information from agencies. But in this case, you know, there are a lot of programs within housing and community development that are ongoing in nature and you can't define them in terms of project initiation, design, construction, like you can with a traditional infrastructure project. If you look at information technology, you'll see, you know, back to that same pattern of seeing, you know, large expenditures for the projects that are substantially complete and significant spending for, for things that are in the kind of construction or implementation in the case of BSET, the implementation phase. Again, we'll see kind of those same patterns. If we look at public works, you'll see if you looked to the left side, that the dollar amounts that we're talking about for public works are significantly higher. Typically about two thirds of the budget is for public works, particularly for the utilities for water, wastewater and stormwater. So the scale of each of these, of each of these is different for the different agencies. But the patterns in terms of where you're seeing funds that are spent and unspent are similar. For recreation and parks, you'll see that they have a lot of projects that are in the design stage. And so you'll see that there are things that are in the design stage now that as we continue to look at these trends over time, we would expect those to be moving into the construction And then for transportation, we have both a mix of traditional infrastructure projects as well as programs. And so here again, you're seeing a lot of items that are identified as other. We have resurfacing programs, we have sidewalk programs, we have traffic calming programs, we have those types of things within transportation in addition to your traditional infrastructure projects such as the bridges that you would see going through project initiation, design and construction. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Vice President Middleton.
I just have one for transportation since it's kind of fresh in our, my mind from yesterday's meeting with our partnership with the state delegation joining us. Could you elaborate more on other? Does that include things like the highway user fund and all that or what? Explain the difference with, I guess, transportation getting state funding and federal funding and this, is this just our city funding?
This includes all the funding sources. So you would see highway user revenue included in the projects that are listed for design and construction as well as in the projects that are in that other category. So some of the projects that are in that other category would be some of our more program.
programmatic projects, if you will. So where we're not identifying an individual project that's going through the design and construction phase as its own standalone line item in the capital budget, but where we have those in a program. So resurfacing is budgeted by quadrant. So instead of identifying every specific street and them having their own line item in the capital budget, there is a capital project for northeast, for northwest, for southeast and for southwest. And so we can't identify the status of those because that's kind of a big, ongoing program that recurs every year. So those are included in that other status.
Okay.
And there's, there's other things like that, but the resurfacing is a, is a good example.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes, to piggyback on the Transportation, for the design, is this including of all projects like bridges, traffic calming? Or is it just like bridges or like the major projects?
It is all projects. So some of those you may see in the other if we, you know, didn't get information about the status of them. So we may not have up to date information about them, but yes, this includes all projects.
Okay. And then, all monies included is also from, we heard about the HUR, but also federal all funding. So this is the complete?
Yep, these are, these are all, all different sources. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief Paranellum.
Thank you.
We are going to go to Baltimore City Public Schools at this time.
My name is Courtney Desabey. I am the Executive Director of Financial Systems and Operations for Baltimore City Public Schools. And apologize, I don't have a very loud speaking voice. I'm gonna walk you through today our Q4 draft budget briefing for Baltimore City Public There we go. So the presentation will consist of a summary of our Q4 general fund revenues as well as our general fund expenditures separated by category and by object, and then the summary of the revenues and expenditures. So regarding our revenue, as you can see, the largest source of revenue, of course, is the state of Maryland, which is about 68% of our revenue, city of Baltimore 26%. Our other revenues, major revenue sources in federal, we have like our E-rate and T-bond subsidy payments, ROTC reimbursements. In our other revenue category, we have MSA and tuition. And in our other financing sources, the largest portion of that is our contribution from fund balance. So this sums up to our general fund budget of 1.5 billion. Our Q4 portion of that was about 300 million, so it's right about where we expected. There are some payments that we still expect to come in. This data is as of Saturday, September 13th. So we're right in the midst of our year-end closing process, which we have to do by September 30th. So we're still doing transactions up to tomorrow. We expect to go to the board for some supplemental appropriations as well. That'll update this information further. This next slide looks at the information based on categories. So this is our expenditures by category. We report by MSD spending category. As expected, the largest areas are gonna be instruction, which is about 40% of our budget based on the MSD category. That doesn't say that that's all the money that goes towards instruction. We also have special education, which are largely instructional positions as well as our fringe costs, which are also largely directed towards the instructional positions. Again, this breakdown is separating just by the reporting categories that we use for MSD. There's nothing here in terms of our Q4 numbers that is unexpected or different from what we expected or we projected moving forward. At this point for Q4, we're looking at about 35% of the total yearly amount, which is about where we expect Q4 to be. There are a number of transactions on the expenditure side that are annual and only come in the fourth quarter, which is why Q4 generally is a little bit higher. This breakdown looks at it by our object level group. So it's for us, generally what we use and easier to understand, we're able to disseminate salaries and wages, fringe benefits, so we can look at all our position costs, which make up about 73% of our total budget. Next largest group is our contractual services, which is about 16 and a half percent of our total budget, as well as some of the other major categories. So we have utilities, other charges, property, equipment, materials and supplies, which is largely like instructional supplies and learning materials for schools. So that breakdown gives us a clearer view of how the budget is separated and used at the school level and the district level. So we like to share this information as well, but it's the same summary in terms of 35.2% fourth quarter expenditure that we saw in the category slide previously. And more useful here, we have the comparison of revenue and expenditures. So this shows our total estimated budget revenue. We also include our carryover encumbrances and we compare that with our total estimated budget and carryover expenditures. So the current amount is a deficit of $15 million. We expect that however, after our supplemental appropriations that are pending, that that'll change to an end result of a surplus of about $2.5 million. We have expected revenue or revenue other than expected from some FEMA reimbursements as well as a couple of the items that we're gonna be doing supplementals for within the next day or two. Are there any questions from the Committee Members?
Vice President Middleton?
Thank you. Just, I guess, explain a little further, a couple of these categories. So the student health services, that looks very low. What is that specific to?
Yeah, so student health services here is really just one of our minor contracts related to student health services. A lot of our student health services actually come through the city, so it's not represented in our general fund budget. So I know you're probably expecting a larger number in here, but it's not reflected in our general fund budget because those services are provided by the city.
Thank you for explaining that. And then the other one, the contractual services, what does that category encompass?
So contractual services are essentially most of our relationships with contractors, things that we do through our procurement process. So non-personnel, what we call OTPS, other than personnel expenditures, but not things like, you know, materials like paper or utilities. So it's generally contractual services specifically. So vendors that provide our transportation, vendors that do our building maintenance, vendors that do teaching contracts or, you know, supplementary contracts for schools as well. That's a large portion of that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just as a quick follow-up.
Sure.
For contractual services, can you speak to, you mentioned different areas of vendors. Is there a vendor that's overwhelmingly contractual or is that, are there some areas that outweigh others?
Yeah, I think right now, the majority of our contractors are towards our facilities, maintenance and transportation. That's the biggest, you know, individual group. Transportation alone is about $30 million or so of our contractual services. And then we have a lot of smaller vendors that provide academic support services in that category of contractual spending as well. But a lot of single largest ones are either plant, building and plant maintenance or transportation related. And sorry, as well as our nursing contract providers that we have contractual services for.
Thank you. And Councilmember Gray?
Yes, this may be a little random, but so when schools are closed, their surplus, their surplus over back to Baltimore City, the desk, the equipment, a lot of that is left there. A lot of it is being left to Baltimore DGS to have to get out and take care of, which means that we're paying for it as a city of Baltimore when it was your stuff. Would, have you guys explored recycling this stuff, being able to resell it, give it to second chance or any type of other program? And I only ask this because once again, this is something that we have to take on and a lot of these facilities sometimes sit empty for years. And so there's depreciation, they can add to be a fire hazard. And quite frankly, I just don't think we should have to bear the costs for Baltimore City for something that, you know, you guys are purchasing as your stuff and you just leave what you don't want and you take what you do. Have you guys explored a way of making sure that you guys can, one, get rid of it, but also find a way so it can be reused or repurposed?
Thanks for the question. So some of that I think is probably best answered by our Operations Department, but I'll try to refer to what I can. I know there is a process by which the team goes through to examine what can be reused or redistributed to other schools or buildings. Some of that is also dependent on how, how closely in the near future that same building may be used again, whether it's for 21st century swing space or surplus or whatever the case is. But I do know that the team examines, you know, what can be salvaged and what can be used. I think there are parameters around how we may use or disseminate things like what we can actually sell or resell or not. But we can get some more information for you on what our more recent plans are to try and maximize that.
Thank you. But, and my request would just be to clear out the entire building, please.
We're gonna go to Vice President Middleton?
Just to piggyback, made me think of the process for when schools close and buildings are then, I think, is it after a year, they go to the controller's office?
For surplus?
Yes. So all that is still the same? No new processes or anything that we should be aware of?
Well, I'm not informed enough to speak on that, but we can get some information from our Operations Department. I'm sure there's a very thoughtful and detailed process that I myself am just not very aware of.
Oh, thank you. I think that would be important for the Committee to have. And did you wanna comment? Oh. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you for your presentation. Thanks for all the agencies who joined us today. This Committee is now in recess.